Seven o'clock, we will call the public hearing on the budget amendment to order. Roll call, Chisman?
Present.
McSparron. Binge?
Present.
Smith?
Present.
Van Dorn?
Present.
Okay. Guys in your packets, and it was published in the Courier there. Go over, it's been the 4th of May, yeah, was the day it was published, so. Do we have any objections on the budget amendment? It's been prepared here. I think we've got everything, the reasons for it were listed there at the bottom. If no objections, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and the budget.
Motion by Chisman?
Second.
Whoa.
I said amended budget.
Amended budget, thank you. Amended budget, seconded by Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. All right. Now we're at like 7:02, we'll call the regular city council meeting to order. Roll call, Chisman?
Present.
McSparron. Binge?
Present.
Smith?
Present.
Van Dorn?
Present.
I will take a motion to approve the agenda.
Measure motion.
Got a motion by Binge?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Chisman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All ayes. Motion by Chisman. All right, I'll also take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll give you that motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion by Smith?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Chisman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All ayes. Moving right on. Okay, Mayor's report. April has brought us a new set of challenges. I received an email from the City of Etanwa about a week after our last meeting. It just said they were choosing to not help us with our local option sales tax doing. However, today, as I was at Hy-Vee today working, I received notice from the county auditor, Kelly Spurgeon, and she talked to the Secretary of the State, and we will have the ability to do our local option sales tax, change it just through a motion of the City Council of Blakesburg. We don't need Etanwa's approval, we don't need 800 signatures in Waplo County, it's something we can do on our own. We have to pass a motion once we get the proper wording, how we want it worded on the ballot, so it'll go on the ballot in November. And due to that, we're gonna have something else that I'm gonna talk about a little later in my notes that'll also be on that ballot in November. But, once we get that to the, get it to the attorney, get it worded the way we want it to, we can take it down to the courthouse and it'll be on the ballot in November. And I'm gonna tell you guys exactly now, I kinda had this prepared, thinking before I found out from Kelly that we were gonna be able to do this on our own, so. This is something that we're gonna, we need to pass. The reason it's so important is because the practice of deficit spending that we've been using can't continue, okay? The general fund deficit, which became an unchecked problem beginning in 2013, has to be addressed. Getting the local option sales tax usage on the ballot in November and passed again in November is imperative to the city's survival. The route we wanna take is changing the local option sales tax usage. This is also why we had to raise the garbage rates as we did last month. It may show on paper that we have a surplus in the garbage fund, but money in the fund balance is different than actual money in the bank account. That started with the overspending of the budget in 2013. The general fund went in the negative, and since then, there's been no attempt until now to rectify the problem. The common way in describing this is to imagine buckets. The general fund bucket is used to pay salaries, your library, parks and rec, public safety, et cetera. Then you have your road use bucket, your garbage bucket, water and sewer buckets. What happened is the city spent in excess of the general fund money in 2013, so to continue to pay the bills, they had to start taking from all the other buckets, just to operate, okay? And that's not supposed to happen. There is some confusion regarding the amount of money in the bank and the fund balances. The total of all fund balances does equal the amount of money in the bank. However, we started this year with a negative balance of the overall general fund of $59,584. Additionally, the final payment of the city hall building and the payment on the fire trucks, which was due in fiscal year 17, was paid in fiscal year 18, which pushed the debt service fund into a negative account balance of $23,464. We also have the additional debt for the 2013, the 2013 city audit, the payments to Leffler Dirt Works, and the payments to the fire department. All bills and the daily operating expenses must be paid. The result is that even though we've had some of the fund balances show significant amount of money, that is offset by the negative amounts in the general fund and the debt service fund. This is not appropriate way for us to work, this is not the way it should work. This all relates back to the overspending that put the city into the negative numbers and caused the deficit spending. Fiscal year 18 has been a painful year financially for the city. Our goal is to turn it around. This will not be easy, and it will take time. While we do not like making price increases for services, it's gonna be necessary. Water and sewer are also gonna go up like garbage did. If we're able to move the lost funds over to the general fund, that will help us get us back into a positive balance in the general fund a lot quicker. So that's why this is, we're gonna need everybody, once we get this on the ballot, to tell everybody we need to vote yes in November, it'd be huge for the city. Mayor, speak. In just a minute, okay? I've got a couple proclamations, we do have communication for the public right after, so Grant, you'll be able to speak in just a minute here. The League of Cities that we're a member of wanted us to read a couple of proclamations. First one was last week was Municipal Clerk Appreciation Week. We missed it, we're a week late, but I wanna read the proclamation that the League of Cities prepared, because Iain is doing a great job for us, so. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and the agencies of government at their levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and partiality and rendering equal service to all, whereas municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk, now therefore I, Jason Leffler, Mayor of Blakesburg, do recognize the week of May 6 through May 12, 2018, as Municipal Clerk's Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Ina Hartman, and to all municipal clerks for their vital service they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent, dated this 14th day of May, 2018.
And we thank you for what you do.
That's right, absolutely. While we're at it, the League of Cities was really big at the meeting that Kevin and I attended on the 50th anniversary of Home Rule in Iowa, and they wanted us to read yet another proclamation, so. Whereas Home Rule is essential to effective and responsive municipal governance in Iowa and provides flexibility to make decisions at the local level where decisions are made closest to the people they impact and can be tailored to fit local conditions, needs, concerns, in order to better serve taxpayers. Whereas the City of Blakesburg supports Home Rule and the powers it provides to make local decisions that best reflect the residents of our community. Whereas the citizens of Iowa approve the adoption of Home Rule in the Constitution of Iowa on November 5, 1968, whereas this is the 50th year of municipal Home Rule in Iowa, whereas Home Rule continues to be vital to the health and prosperity of all cities in Iowa, now therefore I, Jason Leffler, Mayor of Blakesburg, Iowa, do hereby recognize the 50th anniversary of municipal Home Rule in Iowa and proudly support its continued authority. So, that's the League of Cities. Home Rule's really important to allow us to continue at the, at the local level, really good thing, so. Just wanna remind everybody, the citywide garage sale will be taking place June 9th, and a reminder of citywide cleanup the following weekend on the 15th and 16th of June. This will be a great opportunity for citizens to get rid of some clutter around town, it would be greatly appreciated to help beautify our city. Dilapidated property inspections will be, be beginning soon, and this is something the administration deems very important. A letter was sent to one property owner who's already contacted us again and said he's gonna be, begin rebuilding and remodeling two homes here within the next month, so, kinda excited to hear that, so. And it is also my regret to inform the city that Ryan McSparron has resigned his seat from the city council due to health reasons. We will be looking to appoint someone at the June city council meeting to take his place, so. That's all I got, that was an offer. Well, I remember, there's a lot of wear hats in there, that's right. Okay, communication from the public, Grant?
You said the prices on water and sewer are going to go up continuously if you cover the red ink?
They will be, yes, it's something we're gonna have to raise, not only to cover the red ink, but as...
We've got a 384, 84 states? 384, 84 states, and I can also pull out two agreements signed by mayors. We're supposed to lay that money back, 110% of what the payments are on debt load plus the interest. You want me to give a number out, I think it's gonna be?
No.
Okay.
Not until, we will talk...
We've gotta draw enough money into the water sewer fund to cover maintenance of the water sewer, to cover graphing, to cover this other stuff, plus that payment every year.
So that's the way that we're buying, the city's buying more water than it's getting paid for by its residents, am I correct?
Correct, and we have found, we have found, we took care of two leaks at this end of town in the winter. We found a leak right behind our back door here, right out the back door last week, it's been repaired. Thanks to Councilman Van Dorn for giving a lot of work on that, by the way.
That should help substantiate to begin with.
Yeah, and it has, it's helped a little bit, but we still have, after we make this payment in June, thirty-one, a little over $31,000, we're back to basically nothing in that fund, so. If we're supposed to have 110 sitting back in case something bad happens, 110% of a payment sitting back, I mean, that's, we have to put back quite a bit of money to, to just sit on.
Well, for all honesty, as former city employee for 13 years, I suggest before you raise everybody's water bill, you make very sure that everybody's water meter is read by a trustworthy maintenance employee. It was my privilege a year ago this summer to show your current maintenance employee where the meters were, and to, in this case, install one on Underwood's house, it's now missing, however, he vouches it's just on some other side of the house, or a city man does. I also have 13 years' worth of meter readings that I didn't read, why didn't I read these residences? Because I was instructed by the then-city clerk, Jane Underwood, to, if I read them or asked to read them, I would be fired. Give and treat everyone equally.
I believe that we are...
Two households right now have number notes on the outside the house.
Grant, I think you're being read, and if I'm wrong, I'll, you know me a long time, if I'm wrong, I'll let you know. Do you wanna, do you wanna sit down and visit someday?
I'm scared to visit anymore, if this doesn't come, if it goes harder enough to court, it will go to the state level. He signs an ADA that I let slide. Grant, if you feel justice wrong, I urge you to feel free to report it.
Anybody else, any other public, yes?
I know like the City of Etanwa has items that you can set out on your curb, the bigger things, that they'll come and do, does our garbage guys that pick up offer a service like that? Cause I know we had talked about the dumpsters and only having certain things that were gonna go in it, and I didn't know if they had a, a deal that...
We can, we can look into that if we can tag stuff, is that...
Well, that's kinda what I was asking, is if there's a number you can call and make arrangements with them, or something like that, to, to pick something up or something, I don't know.
We have tags for extra...
No, I'm talking item.
Oh, your one like appliances or whatever, or something?
Yeah.
I think they charge in Waplo for disposing appliances, I think.
It's like five bucks.
Yeah.
But if they come pick it up, I pay five bucks, they're gonna come pick it up.
And I just didn't know if our garbage people offered a service like that, or had a price or anything, I mean...
Wait for contact with management and find out.
It just might be something good to know.
Okay.
Instead of storing it all year.
Yeah.
Overlooking your dumpster.
I think what's gonna charge, you know, basically, they told me to do that one time, you know, throughout the year, that they're still gonna charge to bring a dumpster here and haul it there, and there's still gonna be a lot of expenses added on to that fund dollars. It's whether the city wants to, but yeah, we can check and see if they'll do it, for certain people, but I don't...
In Etanwa, you can, you can phone with people and you can make arrangements and say, I'm gonna have my sofa and stuff out, what day you want it?
Do they operate their own, do they bulldog sanitation, is that a city-owned and CERs, with those contracts? We can find out though.
I mean, you can run it out, yeah.
Five bucks a charge, something like that. Like, I turned, I think a refrigerator, what is it, ten bucks a day, something like that, I mean...
Well, a refrigerator, if it still runs, the line energy, maybe fifty bucks.
Yeah.
All you have to do is have a plug, hit it, pick it up, and...
That's what they charge. They get it delivered.
We'll look into it, and we'll see, hopefully we'll have something for you that we can tell you next month, we'll put it in the notes or something, let you know. Any other public comment? Yes, sir?
Ina, thank you for your service and what you're doing for our town, we needed that position filled by a competent person, and you're doing a fine job, I appreciate you.
Nice, thank you for that.
Thank you. All right, any other public comment? I think we're gonna move on, okay? Old business. We're gonna open the sealed bids for the property at 310-312 Increes Street. Had two.
Only two?
Only two, only two. Okay, and we have a high bid of $10,005 to Robert Chisman. So, Bob, we have to just...
I think just make a motion to accept that, and accept that bid, and then I'll get together with you.
All right. Make a motion to accept that bid. Got a motion from Smith to accept the bid from Iain. Van Dorn, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I need to abstain, I believe.
You have to abstain, cause... Yep, all right. Three ayes, one abstain.
Congratulations.
Yes.
They'll all visit after, after meeting here, and then take care of that.
All right. Oh, okay. Again, that was in my mayor's notes, I guess the, the property inspections are gonna begin here real soon. Have a couple issues that we're trying to get taken care of immediately. So, letters been sent to the inspector, and they should be starting very, very soon Street repairs, that was something that we've been discussing repeatedly here the last few meetings. We have talked about, I believe, maybe trying to get something going in June, and patching some streets. Still kinda in the process of figuring out where we're gonna buy our patch from. We've had, we do need, I think we discussed some rock too, we were gonna need to get some rock in a couple spots. I would assume that we'll have to do that at the next meeting, they'll approve to purchase rock, we'll figure out where we're gonna get it from, where we're gonna get the patch from. We'll have that set to go so we can start hit the ground running in June on that.
Did we, okay, a load of rock for cemetery, or is this...
It's in their budget, so.
It's in their budget, and...
They did have a load in their budget.
They had, and they passed it at their meeting, correct? Cause that's why, if they passed it, it's in their budget that they can buy it, we don't have to, it's kinda like the library. They can approve, they approve the payment and their own bills and their own purchases, and we don't. I mean, that's, that's on them, so, but they did, they're gonna get a load of rock, cause they had it, I mean, it was still available to them in their budget, so, yep, they got that coming. So, as far as then, now it's on us to get some, some rock and some patching stuff bought next month, so we can hit the ground running in June.
Larry talked about, what was that, reclaimed asphalt?
Yeah.
Is that for patching or for resurfacing, or what, either one?
It's the same stuff we had last year, the, your patch and holes, but we've kinda got to figure out, that kinda goes back to our budget and what we're gonna have, we're gonna have to figure out, you know, because of times past, I don't know, we've got what that big payment in June.
We've had some estimates and everything.
We kinda gotta just find out what we can afford.
It was $375,000, or $375,000 for, or $600,000 for 16 tons or something.
I've got $365,000, I copied it down tonight last night. Is, is there somewhere we could go look at that, where they...
Reed and Reed.
Maybe where it's actually been applied.
Oh, I use the patcher.
Same, yeah, it'd be the same stuff we used last year in holes, but the holes didn't get blowed out with an air compressor like they should've been, is the biggest thing. Cause it doesn't hear if you don't blow the dust and dirt out of the holes.
I guess I'd like to go somewhere where somebody's put it down, you know, did it last one year?
Have to contact Reed and Reed, see where they put it.
We can give them a call, and we'll find out, and if you wanna check it out, Bob, we can...
I think I'd go look at it, see, you know, you know, if it lasts as good as the others, great, but if it lasts half as long, it might be something we need to...
I think that's the whole thing, that last year that would've worked out a lot better had we, for one thing, blew, you have to have an air compressor and blow, they actually make like a pick with air running through it, that you gotta pick all the dirt and lose. That last block goes closest to the school actually needs something very drastic done, I mean, Reed and Reed, if we get forward to have them do a little bit there, but it kinda, a lot of it's gonna go really, I think, on what we have, you know, what we have in the, the bank, just like what we ran into last week on this garbage fund, we don't have what it says, and so we can't buy something we don't, you know, we can't afford. We can sure go look at this though, and see if there's any other options, but Reed and Reed does both, I mean, they'll patch, we could probably just patch in that piece of road down there by the school, that's just one, you know, I sure like to use these, that same patching material, but rent a, rent an air compressor and a skid loader and a, you know, compactor to do it all right.
I was saying, my concern is, you know, is that, I realize it's cheaper, but is it gonna, is it gonna do, you know, a job?
That's the cheapest way, yeah, that was kinda the, I mean...
The whole deal, it's, I've worked around it before, but if you don't blow out the holes, you're wasting your time, you might as well not throw it in.
We don't wanna shortchange the citizens of the community, but we're dealing with a...
I mean, last year it was nice to have something for the potholes, but if you don't do the steps it takes to put it in right, then you just totally wasted it, and somebody else bought it, so, I don't, must not have been a big deal last year, but, but you know, you have to blow out every pothole with a compressor, and then you have to pack the stuff once and put it in.
Well, I think some of them last year stayed, I mean...
Yeah, but I'm just...
There's no sense doing it if we don't do it right.
Catch Paul Poston, he might tell you where they've done some of that, and you have no idea.
Yeah. I think Rob Reed's actually in charge of all that now, isn't he?
I guess, Meyer, you maybe do a little less, and make sure we put something in there that'll get us several years down the road, and, you know, I mean, it'd be nice to do it all, you know, we love to do that, but...
Yeah.
Maybe we have to fix the worst place, and like some of the secondary...
Long-term, if we can get the, we get the local option passed in November, and we get, get all our houses in order financially, and we start getting that, I'd like to see us go back to double seal coating a couple streets every year, that was, ideally, that's what we'll get back. When I was on the county presidency, that was a pretty good project that we got a lot, we got a lot done that way, so.
We need to look at some drainage too, on some of these streets, because we're places where the street's lower than the, I would call it the ditch bank, you know, and...
Yeah, we've gotten the hole around, still finding, I'm finding a lot of the old tile intakes in people's yards, it's still where when it rains, the water, the surface water running down into our sewer and going in our lagoon. I think sometime back, some of them were plugged, but not a whole lot, there's still a few up and around, but they're gonna have to be dug up, we're gonna need to back dig them up and cap them off below the ground right, glue it, you know, make a glue fitting on it and cover them up, but it's not good to have the runoff water running, you know, those are just drains and stuff around from, I suppose, trailers and stuff where they didn't sit. That's something else we need, I know a couple of them now that we need to get. When we have a little money ahead, we, we need to get them plugged up so we're not, that's not only putting dirt, plus the runoff water into the sewer too, also, I mean, that's kinda why we line these sewer drains and stuff.
Yep.
See if it's... No, I'd say, yeah, I'd say just let in top dirt.
Go check it out, see.
Reed and Reed, and see, and find some, Rob, we can talk to him, but yeah.
See how it's working.
Be nice to find some other town that'll use it, you know, and see what their experience with it was. I mean, it's good, it'd be great, you know?
Well, it's good, we use, you know, we're married, we've got a mild factories and parking lots, and we've used it, but we wouldn't use it where you blow it, it's just like anything you, if you do it right, and it lasts 10 times as long as if you just put it in. The first real wet winter you have, you bust it back out.
All right, so I think we're on the street repairs, we're ready to move there, just gotta check, check some of them out, so move on to new business. Okay, we have a resolution. 18 dot 5 dot 14 dot 1. A resolution amending the annual budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018, be resolved by the Council of the City of Blakesburg, whereas the Blakesburg City Council approved the 2017-18 budget amendment as published. I would take a motion to approve Resolution 18 dot 5 dot 14 dot 1, amendment of 2017-2018 budget. Motion by Smith?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Chisman. Roll call vote. Chisman?
Aye.
McSparron? Binge?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Van Dorn? Resolution 18 dot 5 dot 14 dot 2, summer office hours. As you guys know, our clerk is also an instructor at Indian Hills. Times are gonna change a little bit, she'll be here a little later in the evening or afternoon for us during this summer term at Indian Hills, so Monday 3 to 6, Tuesday 3 to 6, Wednesday 8 to 4, Thursday 1 to 5, and Friday 8 to 12:30. I would take a motion to approve Resolution 18 dot 5 dot 14 dot 2.
I'd make a motion, we approve Resolution 18 dot 5 dot 14 dot 2.
Motion by... Seconded by Binge. Roll call, Chisman?
Aye.
Binge? Smith?
Aye.
Van Dorn?
Aye.
Okay, next up, we have a controlled burn by the Blakesburg Fire Department. A training burn on the property of Frank Rincuso. A training burn on the property of Frank Rincozo, uh, at the address of two, four, six, one, eight Bluegrass Road in Blakesburg, uh, right across the bridge, uh, the Stuffer Bean Church. We have, oh, what do I do with that? Jim brought these in, this is the paperwork, it's been disbested, tested, if you guys wanna look at it. Uh, and this is the notification to the D N R that they're gonna be doing that burn. Uh, everything looks like it's in order, they're all good to go. Just need to, this is just a motion, uh, so just need a motion to approve the training burn at that address.
I'll make a motion to approve the training burn.
Seconded.
Seconded by Chisman, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All in favor.
No opposed. Okay, now we're back to our, any of these back right or just keep, hang on to them?
Yeah, I'll get back, I said, you can hang on to them, we'll file them.
Okay. Alright, uh, on the last two, um, times the city's been audited, there's been a, wanted us to have a third party to come reconcile and review the finances. We've got, Bob's been approved as a city council member to do it, and now we're looking to approve Kimberly Van Dorn to also come in and do this on behalf of the, the citizens and the taxpayers to, just to make sure we're gonna hang on that up and up as far as the finances go, so. I would like, uh, a motion to pass resolution eighteen dot five dot fourteen dot three.
I'll make a motion to pass resolution eighteen dot five dot fourteen dot three.
Seconded. Seconded by Binge. Uh, roll call, Chisman?
Aye.
McSperon? Binge?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Van Dorn?
Should I abstain or, although I, I won't abstain, either way.
That was a, okay, abstain, so. I had passed three then, so if you wanna abstain, it's your wife. We appreciate that, uh, we think there might be a little bit further coming on that as far as like how often and what the, these. We appreciate you taking the time to volunteer and do that, Kim, that's awesome. Much appreciated. Uh, okay. Now we need approval of the cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor permit for Blakesburg oil. This runs good for them through July first, twenty eighteen, through June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, uh, just their yearly thing to, so I can sell smokes and chew and all that good stuff over at the, uh, gas station. So, I make a motion to approve the cigarette, the nicotine vapor permit for Flakesburg oil. Okay, a motion by Binge?
Seconded.
Seconded by Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No opposed. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll give you that motion to adjourn.
Motion by Smith?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Van Dorn, all in favor?
Aye.